Welcome to the October 1st meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room and now join me as we reaffirm our loyalty to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is continue public hearing for River Ridge. Applicants are seeking a site plan amendment for facade upgrades. These are the townhomes located just to the north of here on the west side of Route 9. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll start off with the consultants. Ms. Polidoro, when he updates for us?
Well, there's so many.
Consultants, right.
So, just a quick overview of the conditions of approval. Last time the applicant was here, did we talk about the trail easement?
I mentioned it.
Okay. So, when we, when the board approved the recreation center last September, it made a condition of the certificate of occupancy that the applicant submit a plan which shows the trail easement. Because the rec center hasn't progressed that far, we still haven't received that plan showing the easement. So, we had proposed to require it as a condition tonight, but the applicant objected saying, you know, "I'd really like more time to be able to get that plan together."
In addition, we're not certain that the easement was actually recorded and filed. We know it was executed, but we, I asked direct director Kathleen Davis a couple of days ago with an urgent on the email title, but I haven't heard back. So, requiring it as a condition right now, if it's never been filed, doesn't seem really prudent. So, we need to make sure that it's actually been recorded in the county clerk's office.
Right. So, this would, this would put that off until the rec center's structure is completed.
Correct. Anything else?
The, well, the other issue that we've been dealing with is parking, because the plan that was prepared for this purpose, which shows the new footprints, does seem to show parking spaces on the individual townhome lots. Now, when you go back and you pull the subdivision plat that was approved 10 or 11 years ago, it, you know, it shows small rectangles. And so, the question is, how do these parking spaces overlay on that subdivision plat? Dan Wheeler said that he made a mistake in the layers. And so, we added a condition saying that if there is parking on the individual lots, that we need easements. So, this will give them the opportunity to sort that out without coming back to the board.
And just for the edification of the audience, this is actually designed to help prevent problems for the future. If there's a case, if, as is shown right now on the plans that were submitted, if communal parking or guest parking is shown on an individual's lot, if that individual said, "I don't want anybody parking there," he has the right to deny parking after that except for his own personal guests. So, in order to avoid any kind of, anything like that happening with maybe neighbors fighting, we want to make sure that there are easements granted so that the HOA would control and also the removal of snow in the parking areas that are, that are common for guests. This should be handled by the HOA, et cetera. So, it's a condition, if they can prove that there's no reason because it was already, these were subdivided, these lots for the common parking areas were already subdivided, then the condition is moot. And if, if somehow, when this was, approval was done 11 years ago, if that wasn't caught, then we'll be catching up on a problem and making it go away now. Any other comments?
The only other comment is that we received an email from Liz Axelson and Pete Sotero, and they advised the board that the change in footprints will not impact the approved stormwater management plan.
Great. Thank you. Let me start to my right. Mr. Mercile, any additional comments?
No, I don't.
Ms. Dexter?
No.
Mr. Groninger?
No comment.
Mr. Murphy?
You left me a little bit at the starting gate on the easement thing. We can make that a condition?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Signa?
No comment.
Would anyone from the public like to comment about this application? There being none, make it a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who has this file?
I have it. Resolution granting site plan amendment approval T, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, that was good. I had it. No, I've got it. Resolution granting site plan amendment extension approval of River Ridge formerly known as Maple Ridge until the first 2014, Resolution 57-02K. Whereas, 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 now, therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby affirms its prior SECRA determination of non-significance, last reaffirmed on September 4th, 2013, finding that the minor modifications to the facades and footprints would not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the planning board grants amended site plan approval for the new elevations as shown on an elevation prepared by Barton Partners dated August 19th, 2014, Sheets 1 and 2, and the modified building footprints as shown on the plan entitled River Ridge at Hyde Park, prepared by DF Wheeler Engineers PC dated March 20th, 2013, last revised August 19th, 2014, S-1, and authorizes the chair to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of the site plan to contain a planning board signature block. Three, revision of the site, of the sheet number to be S-1.1. Four, revision of the site plan to contain the following note. This revised sheet S-1.1 modifies the proposed building footprints and depicts the location of the trail easement. All other details on the site plan said entitled River Ridge exterior lighting design prepared by DF Wheeler Engineers PC, revision five, last revised April 18th, 2011, remain valid and part of the approved site plan. Five, verification that the required performance guarantee for the road is in full force and effect. Six, approval by the planning board attorney of parking easements granted to the HOA for any guest parking spaces which are located on individual townhome lots. Be it further resolved that this amended site plan approval extends the time to complete construction of the site plan entitled River Ridge at Hyde Park, prepared by DF Wheeler Engineers PC, revision five, last revised April 18th, 2011, excluding the separate recreation center site plan for an additional two years from the date that the amended sheet S-1.1 is signed.
I need to make a quick correction. Condition four, the sentence following the colon, it should read, "This revised sheet S-1.1 modifies the proposed building footprints," period, as it will not be depicting the location of the trail easement at this point.
Okay. So, I will delete and depicts the location of the trail easement.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, is there a second?
Where does it, where do we put the condition of the trail easement in there? No.
So, there, there was a condition earlier today about a trail easement. And I had a last minute phone call with the applicant's, or from the applicant's attorney before the meeting, and so that condition was deleted, but number four wasn't updated.
Only because we already, we conditioned it when we did the, when we did the recreation center, that's in a separate parcel.
All right. We're gonna, that's.
We'll get it. We'll get it no matter what, like I said. Thank you.
Second is amended.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Lands of Sire. Applicants are seeking a site plan extension for, to build a medical, an approved medical building at 4185 Albany Post Road. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments from consultant?
No.
Any comments from the board?
Nope.
We have a letter from Mr., we discussed this in the last public hearing. If you'll recall, both of these public hearings had to be held open because the Poughkeepsie Journal failed to advertise them properly. But basically, Mr. Baxter is still looking for an anchor tenant on the bottom floor. There's someone interested, he forwarded an email to me, but it's on a medical plaza or medical tenant. So, just in advance, he, we're going, I think we should continue this because he's continuing to look for medical tenant. But if the tenant that's proposing to come there returns, then he'll have to come back for a site plan amendment because it would be for entirely different building, almost a different use. Would anyone from the public like to comment about this application? There being none, make it a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Who has this file?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Who has this file?
Resolution number 58-08E. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants a one-year extension pursuant to Section 108-9.6A of the code of the time in which the applicant must commence construction, two and including September 17th, and the time in which to complete construction, two and including September 17th, 2016. There will be no written verbal notification from the planning board office, the applicant at such time as the extension expires. Any request for an extension of the deadline set forth herein must be submitted to the planning board at least 30 days in advance of said dates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Havlin Shopping Plaza. The applicant is seeking a site plan amendment to do some, again, some facade upgrades. And Mr. Lees, come on up.
Aye.
Let me first get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just as a housekeeping detail real quickly, Ms. Knapp, for later on, when we do the resolutions for the signage at Gardner Ben Balkenberg's property, you printed out the park beverage wall signs twice, so we need the Darby O'Gills resolution. It's okay. We're gonna need that. We have.
It's there somewhere.
There's three resolutions here, and the Darby O'Gills one is for the park beverage wall signs, which already, that's on the right folder, that sign. So, we just need Darby O'Gills to be printed out. Okay? Sorry about that, Mr. Lees. Would you like to take over from me for a moment?
Michael. Excuse me.
Yeah, what's in the resolution? Show me the resolution again. I'm sorry, we're having another housekeeping moment. Where's the resolution for?
Problem is, the title unchanged.
Ms. Polidoro?
Yes.
In the extension for Lands of Sire, is, I'm now looking at the, this was not sent to me earlier. When I'm looking here, it appears we did not reaffirm our prior secret findings.
Oh, you don't have to?
Good.
Because extension requests are type two actions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Lees, one more time, would you like to make any kind of presentation?
Sure. Sure. I've got two copies for everyone else.
Sure. Do we have the walk-around microphone?
No.
What I have is my final drawings that we're gonna hand in on Friday along with the building permit. And what we've done is, we created spots for all the signage, so I can make the signage uniform now. So, I've given dimensions and locations of all the signs for all 11 stores. The rest of the plan is the same. The other detail that we changed.
Can you speak a little closely into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The other detail that we changed is on the flat roof area in relation to the comment that you made last time. So, we added a railing. It says metal railing. I don't believe it's gonna be made out of metal. It'll probably be maybe some man-made material, maybe hard plastic, but it's gonna be a white, almost a fence-like material, and that'll match all the white trim that's going on above the hardy board there. So, that'll give you a break, that'll give us a break on the two flat roof areas.
Thank you. I have to, my first question would be, I don't believe Ms. Moss has had a chance to review all the sign locations. Do we know that this comports with our sign code? In other words, you have a total, a maximum allowed for the site, and I want to make sure that.
Did you bring extra copies for everyone?
No, I just brought two sets of drawings, which I can leave if you need. And the second page has some of the cuts and the doormats and the dimensions and so forth.
I have to check the sign code, but I believe that there's a maximum for signs in a shopping center of 100 square feet for all signage. I should add, the railing looks nice.
Yeah.
And I like the fact that, Ms. Moss will be particularly happy that you gave her location for future signage.
Yes.
Each, each sign can have no more than two wall signs, and it's based on the linear square footage of their leased area, but in no case shall an individual business have more than 100 square feet of signage.
So, there's no total for the overall shopping center? Good.
Right. Freestanding sign does have a total. I don't.
Right. But this, and so this is showing only signs per tenant, a total of two wall signs, or in some cases, one, and none of them, it looks like, is going to exceed the amount per, okay.
But Ted would need to measure to make sure that they each comport with the leased area.
Right. So, the, the allowed signage is based on what your linear square footage is in the front. So, if a particular business only has, say, 20 square feet, then all it can have is a 20-square-foot sign. Those can be two wall signs that are each 10, or it can be 120. I see what you did. You just put a sign in the area over each window, which pretty much makes sense, and you made them uniform, which is also nice. We just have to check the calculations to make sure that what we're approving is actually allowed by code. That make any sense to you?
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay. Did you make any other changes you want to, or you want to mention to us?
No, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Can you describe the railing more? Is it decorative?
Uh.
Or is it to hang the signs from?
Oh, no, no, no. It's just.
To disguise the flat roof.
It was just something that kind of ties the buildings together, and it was kind of an inexpensive, sturdy way, and it'll match the white trim, so I think it'll be nice. Yeah.
Let me, then, comments from Ms. Polidoro? Any further?
No.
Mr. Signa, any comments?
Still concerned about the drainage, and I think we received a letter.
Did you see a copy of this letter?
No.
I wanted to take my copy and just kind of breeze through it, and it'll help you understand what our concerns are.
The adjacent site owner, Ms. Pizzarelli of Redesices, has submitted comments that we should, should we read those into the record?
I think we.
You don't need to read the entire letter.
So, I thought we can sort of stipulate.
You can just say the letter dated October 1st.
Right. Ms. Pizzarelli submitted a letter dated October 1st, along with various pictures, and they have to do with drainage issues that are toward the rear of the property. It's unclear from the pictures, at least to me, where exactly she's taking the pictures on. I can't tell if all the drainage is, all the water problems are on your site, or if it's a combination of sites. There's just not enough clarity on it from what I could tell from the photos, and when I compared to the survey just now, it's still unclear to me. I believe what we would need to do is have Mr. Sotero look at this, our engineer, to see. Mr. Lees, can you, well, you're still looking at it.
Yep. No, absolutely, no. I know exactly what she's talking about. No. So, what we did was, can I, should I explain?
Yes, please.
So, there was, and I never really noticed it because it's behind the building, and the really only people that use behind the building is for deliveries and Payless oil. So, there was a defunct catch basin with a broken-up grate cover, grate on it. Never really noticed it, and it was kind of all angled and beat up and everything. So, what we did is, I was gonna rebuild it, but it wasn't really doing anything anyway. So, what I did is, I pulled it out, and we took that whole area and we filled it with stone, and then we grated it. I had an excavator come in and did that, and cleaned that whole back area up, and it works as like a natural drain, but it doesn't really, the water doesn't really accumulate there. The water is, really accumulates in the front. But no, there's no drain there, there's nothing there anymore. The grate's not covered. I pulled it all out, it was all garbage. We cleaned it all up, took it out last summer.
Can you tell me when, when you did this approximately? Her pictures are from June.
June of this year?
Uh huh.
I think I did it summer of last year. Her pictures are of the gravel, and that's the way it looks today. So, what I did was, there's about four feet of gravel there. We, when we pulled the catch basin out, we filled it all up with gravel, and so there's about four feet of gravel there, grated off. I was gonna, I was gonna blacktop over that, but I was told that that catch basin was put in because the house alongside the driveway, the neighbor's house, their basement used to get flooded. So, my excavator says, "John, you better not fill that up, because I think it was put in there for a reason a long time ago." So, we took it out, we made a natural gravel area. And never had any questions from the neighbor or anything, so it must work fine.
Well, this is a question from your commercial neighbor, that's all, next door. And it appears as though, what she's saying is, is that the water runs onto her property when it fills up?
Don't know. Don't know.
Okay. Any additional comments, Mr. Signa?
No, that's, that's.
Mr. Murphy?
Just that I'm very concerned about the drainage, and I agree, we need to send Peter over there and have him meet with the writer, the author of the letter, and see if we can't figure out where the water's coming from, where it's supposed to go to, and get everybody happy.
I apologize. Mr. Sotera, our engineering consultant, thought there wasn't anything formed tonight, and so yesterday he asked if he could be excused from attending, both he and Ms. Axelson, and I said yes. But this just came to us this afternoon for new information, so he hasn't had a chance to even review it himself either, I don't think, because I think he took the day off. Mr. Groniger?
I'm too concerned about the drainage, because if you look at the bottom of that packet you were given, she has them dated September 2014, but it still shows the manhole there.
No, there's no manhole in this.
I, I agree with you. I'm just saying, I'm pointing out the discrepancy there, but there's no real date, it just says September 2014. There's not a date in front of it. So, I don't really know what to make of this as new news.
We have to have a meeting.
We have to understand that.
That manhole is, I don't know what that is. That's not what I was talking about. I don't know if that, that's my property, though.
Well, that's what I'm also not sure of.
Right. Let's go back to the picture here. See this picture? I didn't even notice that manhole. I don't know, that might be a sewer drain or something, but that's not what I was talking about. The catch basin was right there in the middle.
Uh huh.
So, that might be a sewer drain or something. I don't even know where my property ends there, because I don't know who owns that driveway coming out. But the catch basin that I took out was right in the middle of that gravel, and that was the catch basin created supposedly because the nature got flooded, you know, 20 years ago or so.
Yeah. I have to then agree with my two board members to the left. This is, we do need to understand it, but I also want to compliment you, because I was concerned about the flat roofs. I like the white fencing up there. It'll be a dramatic, nice improvement to the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lees, everyone apparently uses the rear drive for deliveries, as you said, Payless deliveries for, I presume that when Awesome Foods was open, even though that's not on your parcel, they also could have had deliveries back there? Is that a commonly-used driveway, in other words?
Well, I guess it's a cut-through. Yeah, well, I know Payless does, and I know the Chinese restaurants gets their deliveries in the back. They can come from the front, or they can come from the other side.
Mm-hmm.
I also think that people go through that driveway maybe to get around the light there.
Yeah, well, I don't try to get around light, but, I mean, we're coming down Havlin Road and cross. Oh.
Yeah.
I'd get Herb fired up here.
But I, I don't like people really to go behind that building there, because my.
Yeah, well, we'll go behind Reedus and right up through, and then out the front of the shopping center.
Yeah.
So, do you know who owns that driveway? Is that, is that easement granted to you, or? Because like you just said, it doesn't look, it's, the parcel that is yours, but on the survey, it just says R-O-W, where it hits onto Havlin. It doesn't.
No, I have a, no, I don't own it. Yeah. And that manhole you're looking at, I don't, I don't think I, well, I can't tell where I am right here, but I have, I don't own that driveway out to Havlin Road. It says I have a 12-foot right away on my site plan.
Do we assume that that is Ms. Pizzarelli's property?
Yeah. Yeah.
He has the easement over it?
Yeah, I would think so, yes.
But it seems to show, but I don't know if there's a recorded document.
It's just that it.
Well, one of the other things that gets intriguing about this, if you're, again, looking at one of the other photographs, and I didn't see this till 6:30 tonight, so I apologize, but I would have driven over there, there's also appears to be a gated fence there.
No, you know what that is? No, you mean, I'm sorry, you meant a gated fence? You mean the little split rail fence?
The gates?
No, it actually has a gate on it in one of the photographs.
For the dumpster?
Oh.
Is that the edge of the dumpster?
Yes.
Or is that actually block people from, you said you have a front access to it, so I mean, it really doesn't make any difference. It's just a question, where is that? Does that block off, like, does it block an emergency vehicle from getting in there? On back-to-fire or EMS?
No, no, no. That, are you talking about that, that right there?
Yes.
I think, I think that's probably the front of her dumpster enclosed.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Looking at it.
Again, I looked at the drawing, and I can't tell.
Yeah, and that area that she's showing all flooded is mostly her area, mostly her property.
We gotta figure out where the natural.
That's what I was going to say. It looks to me as though.
It's like her water's going on my property.
If he has the easement over, I don't know where the water's being created, but it appears as though a majority of it is actually on the Redesices parcel.
Probably comes off of Havlin Road, you know, because it, it kind of slopes down from there, you know?
This is why we'll have the engineers take a look at it.
We just gotta figure out how to get rid of it and make everybody happy.
Michael, I'm gonna ask also, obviously, we intend, engineer, to make sure that we do not have some sort of blockage for access to the rear from the EMS perspective.
I actually emailed him before I came tonight to have him take a look at it as soon as possible. Ms. Dexter, any comments?
I also really like the addition of, it's a, it's a very simple solution to put the metal fencing up there. And I guess my question is with the signage, so you didn't, you didn't have something coming down off the roof. This is actually on the wall above the, above the windows.
Right.
Okay.
Which is code compliant.
Yep. Yep. I, I mean, I like the look of it. I think that's gonna be great, and it'll be fairly easy for your tenants to come in and.
Yeah, this way, whenever you have tenants, new tenants, they, all they have to do is come in and just show us the signs as long as it fits within those spaces. That's it.
Right. That's what you said last.
Yeah, it's easier that way. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Merciciano?
No comment. I like the railings over the flat roofs.
Thank you. I think it'll be nice.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak about this application? Okay, there being none.
Nope, you do.
Oh, Ms. Sweet, please come and speak, take the microphone.
Yes, please. Barbara Sweet, Six Covey Road, Hyde Park. If this is going to be painted, siding, or whatever...
New hardy board.
Pardon?
Hardy board siding.
Okay. Keep it a subdued color rather than a bright white color, if possible.
The color that you're seeing on there will be the color that's going to be painted, the color shown.
Okay.
Oh, it's about samples, good.
Yep, that looks more subdued than bright white. Okay.
Thank you.
Is that...
Yeah.
No, that's a good comment, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Lees brought samples, because we...
I like stone also.
Thank you.
The, I'm told that the three schools and the post office were done with, of course, stone. The brickmakers along the Hudson, there are 140 different brickyards, they were furious at President Roosevelt because he didn't use bricks, but I'm glad to see you're going to use stone. That's what we need.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else from the public like to speak about this application? Okay, so I'm in a bit of a quandary. We were prepared to close the public hearing and take action tonight, but we have new information about the drainage that everyone seems concerned with. So what we would, what we would normally do is continue the public hearing for two weeks. You were prepared to submit everything on Friday, I believe?
Do you think, just to jump in, do you think that the drainage, or any question on the drainage, is that a planning board issue? I mean, I'm not doing any site work.
Well, it's, if, once it's, once it's given to us, it's a planning, it's a site plan issue, so it's a planning board issue. Would the board like to condition this on resolution by the town engineer, add a condition to the resolution, so that the town engineer could deal with this to his satisfaction rather than coming back before us? Alternatively, I mean, he would still need to work that out with Pete before he's able to apply, or able to obtain a building permit, but he could get the building permit stuff started. Alternatively, we could try to find a time to do a special meeting next week, if you guys are so inclined.
Michael, I think a number of us are attending the session next Wednesday.
Oh, yes, me too.
I don't know if we have a quorum. I might propose that we could close it out next Wednesday, as long as the town engineer can do it by that time.
I have to admit, I don't have my calendar in front of me, I don't know if I have anything later. I know I, the training is from one, just for everyone...
1:30 to 3:30.
Yeah, we're required to have sexual harassment and safety, workplace safety training.
Violence in the workplace.
It's called OSHA.
Well, there's, there's two separate sessions, there's a 1:30 to 3:30, then there's a 6:30 to 8:30, I believe. So the room will be occupied that night. Has, is anyone here signed up for the 6:30 to 8:30?
I am.
You are?
Three people have not, I think, changed, and there's three members that haven't signed up, and Sandy asked me to mention it.
Well, as a reminder, this is now a requirement of the state to receive your training. Would it be possible for us to continue this to, say, 6:00 PM next Wednesday, a week from Wednesday? Or again, the other alternate would be to have a condition added so that the drainage is met, set with, to the satisfaction of our town engineer? I'm not sure how to word that exactly, but I think Victoria could.
What does our county attorney say?
We're talking about...
Just this one area?
One area, because I don't, I don't know if Pete's, I don't know if when he goes out. Because it seems kind of nebulous at this point, we're not sure where the drain is, whose property it's on, I would prefer not to condition approval on that, just because it's a broad issue at this point. I'd like a little more confirmation of what exactly you would want Pete to do, so we know when it's satisfied.
Then Pete needs to go out and tell us, just some investigation first, so we understand more the nature of the problem. Could we try to a 6:00 o'clock meeting a week Wednesday?
Absolutely. Good with me.
Do I have a quorum?
I'll be there.
Okay, I have a minimum of a, I have at least a quorum, then, there being no other further public comment.
The Dutchess County Planning Board is meeting next Wednesday, too.
I know, I'm on it.
I know.
I have to be...
I'm invited.
Oh, oh, that's right, good. I have a county planning board meeting from 3:30 to, we, we're out promptly at 5:00, so I'll be back here by 6:00. You will, believe me, they really are prompt. It's your first time to...
Wait, yeah, there's a special presentation that day.
Well, let's hope, well, I may have to leave early to get back out, so I'm making a motion to continue the public hearing to Wednesday, October the 8th.
Some move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
At 6:00 PM, this is a specific time, we'll get Pete, I'll get Pete started working with you as soon as possible. Do you have his contact information as well?
Well, no, he's the town engineer.
Yeah.
So are you going to want me at that meeting, or if, no?
You don't have to be.
We do need the new revised plans.
Well, I can leave, I can leave both of these with you if you want me to, that set and this set? Is that what you want?
At the minimum, yes.
One for Pete, one for you guys.
And one for the file.
We'll need, we'll need a third set for the file.
Okay.
Before we get a third set for the file, we'll need actually a set that has a planning board block signature.
Actually, why don't you, if you want to give him a draft resolution, then if he's going to be printing more plans, he can just make the changes now. Here.
Do you have one? Oh.
Okay, so, not adopted, but these were the things, these were changes to the plans that you were going to have to make. It looks like you've probably addressed some of them already by your sign plan, but this one you're going to have to do, this one you're going to have to do, this one is going to be revised to say...
If necessary, we'll be in another room, then.
This one's going to, I'm crossing out part of that last one, so it'll only be revised to say that. So you can make the changes now, or you can make them later?
I thought it was 6:30, 30, that's what I remember. It was weird, it was this last one.
When you meet with Pete, he'll go over all those, the conditions, too.
I have the survey already, because that, there were no changes to this, right?
Right, you don't need that again?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Lees, we'll see, well, you don't have to be here in a week, but if you have a pen, Mr. Setaro's number is 454-3411, wait, 3441, I'm sorry. Mm-hmm, Pete Setaro, S E T A R O. I've already alerted him to it, but if you want to give him a call in the morning, because the sooner this can be addressed, the better. Okey-dokey. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Maltz Lot Line Revision. Making a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I come on up? Mr. and Mrs. Malt? And actually, if you want to come up here, these are the sets of plans that you didn't have. Did you ever receive them? So, when we were seeing the new boundary line and the 50-foot setback, what we weren't seeing, because I fail to look how tiny that was written, this was the limit of disturbance. So, the limits of disturbance from the 1992 site plan show you already have in many areas bigger than a 50-foot setback for the new property line. So all we will need to do is have a line like this just adjusted where it's not quite 50 feet to be shown, that's it. That was as complicated as it was, and I apologize that we had to negotiate so much back and forth to discover it, but again, because you didn't see these, and...
I have this map without this.
Without the line, that's what I thought, and I didn't realize that this was actually where the limits were in the first place. So you pretty much, it's, over here, it's, you may need to dot that out just a little bit, because for the most part, this will be the same thing as this. Is that making any sense to you? In other words...
So we don't have to do anything.
You'll, you'll need to have your surveyor remove this before I can sign it, and he'll just need to relocate a portion of this, he'll, he can show it running contiguous and just here, and we don't, we won't need a bunch of sets of plans, he only needs, he will only need to change wherever the 50-foot setback is shown. He needs to change all three, all three sheets to remove this.
Can I have the original maps? Because this was something that was requested, right?
Well, it was...
The original maps we gave you did not have that.
Right, but it needs to show, it's still, it's not requested, it's required, it still needs to show a 50-foot setback, it just needs to show where it might deviate right in through here, if that makes any sense. It's a simple data layer for him, I assure you. He can remove this, if you heard data layers earlier, when they're doing on AutoCAD, they turn off a layer and this just goes poof and disappears, and then he has to redraw a line just to plot it out 50 feet from the green, just so we know that in through here there's a 50-foot buffer maintained everywhere. I might add, in through here, it's got to be shown, but you don't even store anything there, because...
Correct.
So you can't, and I don't, there's nothing there, so that's, that's made a condition of the approval. So, again, I apologize, I wish that we had seen, been able to parley over this in person earlier, when we all had the same sets of maps, because you were looking at one set and I was looking at the other, that's why we kept going, no, no, no. So anyway, that's the simple part of this. I think I've explained to everybody what happened, was that the 50-foot, the 50-foot buffer was shown in the wrong parcel. As it turns out, the proposed boundary line was, in most cases, except for one small area, well over 50 feet from your actual site plan approval. So the buffer that you're, that we require is for the most part, except for one little section, already there with your new property line. So, let me get, any comments from the consultants, Ms. Palladaro?
No.
Mr. Signa?
No, just that I'm glad it's turned out the way it is, because I know how hard they've worked to, to try to make it consistent with the town's zoning.
I also want to emphasize real quickly how pleasant it was to work with you, when I kept saying, no, you can't, you've got to change it. No, no, you were really, you never lost your temper, you were really nice throughout the whole thing, and that's not always the case, believe me. Mr. Murphy?
Too, I'm glad that it's over and it shouldn't be this hard.
Mr. Groninger?
Well, we've been through this sort of thing before, and I'm sure we'll have it again, but any rate, I'm happy for you.
Ms. Dexter?
Oh, great, excellent resolution.
Mr. Merciciano, yep?
No comment.
Okay, would any member of the public like to comment about this application? Nope? Making a motion to close the public hearings?
Some move.
Second.
Who has this file?
I do.
Ah.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board Resolution granting subdivision approval, Maltz subdivision, October 1st, 2014, resolution number 14-16A. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the subdivision plat entitled Topographic Map Lot Line Adjustment for Charles and Patricia Maltz dated April 1st, 2014, last revised May 27th, 2014, prepared by Spencer S. Hall, land surveyor, and authorizes the chair to sign the subdivision plat after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of the plat to show the 50-foot buffer on the east side of the new property line for the salvage yard, and eliminate the proposed 50-foot buffer on the western side of the new property line. Three, Department of Health permission to file. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you, and thanks for your patience and forbearance, and if you have any other problems, you know how to reach me. Thanks.
I would never call you again.
The next item on the agenda is a sign application for T E G federal, I'm sorry, is a site plan amendment for T E G Federal Credit Union. We received word back from Dutchess County Planning today that it was a matter of local concern. They did have a suggestion that we ask the applicant to, oh, are you here to represent the applicant? Uh-huh, I thought I saw some stonework over there, please come on up. And if you would, state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Doug Crossley, Crossley Associates Works, Newburgh, New York. I'm here for the T E G Federal Credit Union.
In essence, you're just taking some blank walls and adding cultured stone that looks like ledge rock.
Yeah, and, and basically, it's, if you've been past the branch, there's some white-clad board that's the majority of the siding on the bank, and we're going to do a lathe and stone application, which is, which is what we proposed. We put in the original package, not the physical sample, but the sheet, paper sheet for the manufacturer. And we're also asked, we were asked by Ms. Moss to do a bench at the front, and we submitted those cuts.
The tear sheet and the location, correct? What I was going to tell everyone is, Ms. Moss doesn't, we can only waive, we were here tonight to consider setting a public hearing, but Ms. Moss and I are in conversation today, don't believe that many members of the public will come out, because this looks pretty non-controversial, we don't really have a lot of people coming out, usually for facade upgrades. We are not allowed ourselves to waive a public hearing for a site plan amendment unless Ms. Moss makes a recommendation. She did issue a recommendation for that today. It's up to the board whether we want to consider waiving the public hearing, but if so, we have a resolution prepared. It's a pretty simple change. The only comment we had from D C Planning, and I want everyone to consider it, was that there is one wall of existing stone. It's not ledge rock like that, it's glaciated rock, meaning it's like, more like river rock, so it's got rounder edges. And Ms. Lavonway of D C Planning just wanted us to consider whether we should require the applicant to face, reface that wall with this stone so that it looks consistent. I myself think it's okay to have what I'll call an accent wall that's different. I'll also, would like to point out that taking off that, it's one thing to add the stone onto an existing wall, it's not that difficult. It's much more difficult to tear off stone that's mortared already on a wall, but we added a condition to the resolution in case a majority of the board wants to see all the walls be uniform with this, we added it as a condition. We can also delete it before it's read into the record. So, comments?
I think we ought to make a suggestion rather than a requirement.
Did you catch that?
Yeah.
We suggest that you...
Yeah, well, it's just a suggestion, I don't think it ought to be part of the resolution.
Our feeling, maybe if I could explain our feeling about that.
Could you speak closer to the microphone?
We were exactly thinking that it was an accent wall, and we purposely picked out the stone because it's very complementary to the...
And your colors match the colors.
And the colors are very, very complementary, so it was not without a lot of consideration about not doing that, there was some discussion back and forth, and as you said, in terms of the credit union, it's a dollar issue.
That's what I assumed, and I'll be honest with you, I don't see anything wrong with it being kind of an accent wall, that's just me personally. Anyone else want to weigh in there?
I think I'm going to weigh in, as my colleague to my left did, and let's allow the client the flexibility to do that. Either way, whatever you deem on that, they're both very nice-looking, if you want to have it as two different kinds, I don't see a problem with that. That's my opinion.
Ed, any comments?
I have no comments, no.
Anna Frank?
They've already thought about the, this question, and have resolved it apparently to their own satisfaction, so, seems fine to me.
Good. Then, are we all agree that we can waive the public hearing as well? It's in the resolution?
Yes.
Do we have to make a motion to waive?
No, it's in the, it's written in the resolution.
Cool.
Who has this file?
I have this file.
Can you delete the condition that...
I can delete anything you want.
Condition two.
I believe it's condition two.
Done. And the second part of the last issue says revision of the site plan to provide for the new stone veneer on the entire building. New, take that out.
That's, that's what would be deleted, because right now it's on three out of four walls.
Well, we're deleting two things, the public hearing and that. Yes.
Well, no, you don't need to delete the public hearing, because...
I'm sorry, it's, it's written in a whereas.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes.
It says, be it further resolved, the board hereby waives the requirement for a public hearing. So that can stay in.
It's back.
Mr. Crossley, you're very lucky.
Thank you. Resolution granting site plan amendment approval, T E G Federal Credit Union, October 1st, 2014, resolution 14-10, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby classifies the project as a type-two secret action, be it further resolved that the planning board hereby waives the requirement for a public hearing, be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the site plan and authorizes the chair to sign the site plan after satisfaction of the following conditions, payment of all fees and escrow.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Since it's our first time to work together, I expect you to go back across the river and proclaim how wonderful it is to work with the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, okay?
Yeah, I'll do that in a way out of town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, and this is going to be a beautiful addition and a nice change. We're very fortunate in our community right now that we're seeing a variety of these facade upgrades. It may be a response to the slow economy, trying to get better tenants, but in your case, it's just a way to make everything look better and fit in better into the town. So thank you, thank your client again from us. Great. The next item on the agenda is a sign permit recommendation for Chestnut Petroleum. This is the mobile station located at 110 Violet Avenue in 9G, and there shouldn't be much discussion, because it was code compliant! It's a nice-looking sign!
How'd that happen?
Congratulations! I believe Ms. Moss in her letter, our email, actually said it was a pleasure to find something that was code compliant.
Yeah. Well, I know that you had two different ones here from Chestnut, and after the last time, Wayne Scott just kind of threw up his hands. I talked to him afterwards, because I've done work with him before, and I just said, you know, "Let me take a shot at getting you what you need."
It's a nice-looking sign with the monopole over to the right, little arch on top. It's very attractive, I'm telling you.
Yeah. Well, the only difference when you work with these, there's something very wrong with gas station signs, because there's the whole, like, shell or whatever, or mobile, whatever it is, is tied in with one company to do the manufacturing. Extremely expensive.
Oh.
And they only prepare certain sizes. And because they are so costly, they try to do whatever they can to get that size, whether it be height, square footage, and whatever. Because that's a standard. So when they go into something that's not standard, it's very, very costly. But fortunately, I've been able to work this out, that we can actually make it for them, so.
Excellent.
Any questions from the board for Ms. Forrest?
No.
About the sign? Who has this file?
Yeah, I do. Resolution recommending issuance of a sign permit pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.2.C. October 1st, 2014, Resolution Number 14-38, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board recommends issuance of a sign permit by the zoning administrator for the freestanding sign, including four fuel pricing panels as proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You know, it took me a long time on these resolutions. It seems sad to hear all those whereas is read so fast, and I had to labor over them. But it's good that we got it going, so...
Frank's a trained whereas guy.
Should have told me sooner.
Do you need a copy of the resolution by any...
They usually send me one.
Yep, they will.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a sign permit for Darby O'Gills. Who has this file?
I have this file.
By the way, I'm going to give one more, another compliment to a really great number of signs. You achieved design unity over all of them because of the similar background. The locations look nice. They were code compliant. You did a great job!
Thanks.
And just for the edification of the board, anybody who's listening or watching, there have been some facade improvements at this site that were not reviewed by the planning board. I want to make certain that everyone's aware that this was not an oversight, that this is actually allowed. Because they're replacing brick with stone veneer, it did not require a building permit. It's only when a building permit is required that site plan is automatically issued or required also, because you can't get it if it's required. And I talked to Mr. Westermeyer, and because it was a load-bearing front wall, it went to a load-bearing front wall, it was completely allowed. So that's why they didn't have to come in. And could you please carry a suggestion to Mr. Man Vulcanberg, or I can too? The only thing that we would have had him do in addition, because he's already got a striped sidewalk or crosswalk in the front, it's something we think it would make it look better, and before you put up the two side wall signs, we would recommend a skim coat of stucco and repainting. It'll lose that cinder block look and make it look far more polished, since he has the front. It's something that the board normally asks for. It's not that expensive considering what he's done to skimcoat it. It's just a little bit of stucco and then painting over it, because it'll lose that cinder block effect. So it's up to him, because there's no site plan.
I'll speak to him tomorrow morning.
But I can guarantee it'll make both those sides look better, it'll finish off that building, because it's looking really, really, really nice right now. I think, but I think we all do. So any questions for Mr. Herslinger from the board?
Nice job.
No.
And he's going to be here for the next three, so who has... Actually, let's just go ahead, instead of doing each one, there'll be one for Park Beverage for the wall signs, and also one for Park Beverage for the new directory sign. Do you have all three of these?
I have all three. I got the trifecta here. Okay, before we start, the resolution for Darby O'Gills has two minor changes to it.
Wait, what?
Does that include... I submitted one after, one for each side and the front sign?
The resolution is for two wall signs, one on the south side and one in the front, a wall sign on the front for Park Beverage. The Darby O'Gills only includes the one side on the side, because they already have a sign up front.
Right.
And then the third resolution will deal with the directory sign.
Monument sign.
Yes, your monument sign, directory sign. So I made sure that they have both wall signs covered.
Okay.
And for Darby O'Gills, did I make... oh, yes.
Okay, there are two minor corrections. The actual name on it is Darby O'Gills Wall Signs, and the first, whereas, also, we had to make a minor correction to put the correct name in there, Darby O'Gills. So there are two amendments to this. I don't know if we have to... I think we have. I'll read it, and then just say, "As amended." I think that will cover us. Okay, resolution recommending issuance of a sign permit pursuant to Town Code Sections 108-24.2A and 108-24.2C/2. October 1st, 2014, Darby O'Gills Wall Signs, Resolution 14-40. Whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board recommends issuance of a sign permit by the zoning administrator for the wall signs for Darby O'Gills as proposed, noting that it has design unity illustrated by a uniform background color consistent with adjacent store signage. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First one down.
All right, moving along. Park Beverages, this is also a wall sign. Darby O'Gills was on the north face, this is on the south face. Resolution recommending issuance of a sign permit pursuant to Town Code Sections 108-24.2.A and 108-24.2/C/2. Park Beverage Wall Signs, October 1st, 2014, Resolution 14-41A. Whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board recommends issuance of a sign permits by the zoning administrator for the wall signs for Park Beverage as proposed, noting that it has design unity illustrated by a uniform background color consistent with adjacent stores signage. Do I have a second? Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number two down.
Two down. Part two? I am on a roll. I'm going to do three as quick as we can. Resolution recommending issuance of a sign permit pursuant to Town Code... we're not going to... we're going to do a skip on that one, we know what it is. Park Beverage Freestanding Directory Sign, October 1st, 2014, Resolutions 14-41. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board recommends issuance of a sign permit by the zoning administrator for the freestanding directory sign, including four tenant panels as proposed, noting that it has design unity as illustrated by a uniform background color consistent with adjacent storage signage. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. What a nice thing it's going to be to see driving into that part of town.
I know, it's great.
You're going to do a soffit in the front, right across, the whole front of it.
Right, that's how... that's one of the things we were urging Mr. Lees, who is here for Havlin Plaza, to consider, was to do like a fascia board so that it could go, because our code is it can't be attached to the roof.
Right.
So his other option was, instead of adding anything along the front, was to also just propose wall signs, which is what he did. But that's part of the approval.
Right. Okay, great. I thank you.
Thank you, and again, it's just a suggestion about the skim coating, but...
I'll speak to him tomorrow.
Your lovely signs will look a lot nicer with that as a background, I promise.
They'll be showcased.
Thank you. Take it easy, Joe.
The second to last item on the agenda is Shelley's... Signs for Shelley's Deli.
That's the last item on my agenda.
Well, I'm going to ask for a quick motion to release escrow. Do we not put that on the agenda?
We haven't heard from Pete.
Oh, that's right, so we have to postpone that. Okay, then the last item on the agenda is a sign permit recommendation for Shelley's Deli. Anybody have this file?
That'd be me.
You're Shelley's Deli people! Come on up! Since we're televised, tell us your names. Speak into the microphone, tell us your names, and tell us a little bit about what your store is going to have.
I'm Ricky Erickson, and this is my fiancee, Michelle Saron. We're going to have really great sandwiches.
Closer in?
We're going to have really great sandwiches and hot food and everything you could think of.
Are you Shelley?
Yeah.
Will there be... this is going to be... so you'll have indoor dining, you can actually order and sit down?
Yes, small dining area, but mostly takeout and delivery.
Oh, delivery?
Yep.
That's a rarity in our town.
That's exactly why we did it.
Well, let me, on behalf of all six, all seven of us up here, welcome to Hyde Park. We're delighted you're investing and bringing business into our community.
Thank you.
You have some... I'll just hazard it and say, great landlords, they're willing to help fix these things up as you go. And I wish you great success when you have your opening, your store opening. We usually try to attend these things. If you join... if you fully join the chamber, they have a big ribbon cutting as well, and it's usually advertised in papers. We always try to attend that, so does the... sort of our elected officials. So we'll be wishing you well, in other words. Any questions from the board about... okay.
Welcome.
Who has this file?
Welcome.
That'd be me.
Resolution granting request for dimensional increase for proposed wall signage and recommending issuance of a sign permit, Resolution Number 14-12... no, yeah, is that 42? 42, sorry. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the board makes the following findings with respect to the requested bonus to permit a maximum letter height of 12 inches recitable below for the proposed Shelley's Deli wall sign. One, additional size of letters inappropriate given the sign's distance from the road. Two, increase in size is appropriate due to the size of the building upon which the wall sign is being placed. Be it further resolved that the planning board recommends issuance of a sign permit by the zoning administrator for the wall sign as proposed, noting that both have a design unity consistent with the adjacent store's signage.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Again, welcome to Hyde Park. We can't... when do you think you might be open?
They said hopefully Halloween.
Oh, wow!
Nice!
You guys are moving along pretty quickly. That's fantastic.
Yep.
Do you live in Hyde Park?
No, we're hopefully soon.
Oh, well. We definitely want to welcome you to our community, then.
Thank you.
Particularly if we feel like having children.
We do.
Ultimately, we have to get married. We have some schools to fill up right now. So thank you, then, and you're ready to go from us.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care.